Good evening and welcome to the Bennington Select Board on June 24th, 2019. I'm Donald Campbell, the Chairman of the Select Board, and I would ask the other people on the board to please introduce themselves, starting with you, Bill.
Bill Scully.
Good evening, Chad Gordon.
Hello, Jeanne Jenkins.
Good evening, I'm Jim Carroll.
Carson Therber.
Hello, everyone, Jeanne Connor.
And I'm Stuart Hurd, Town Manager.
And Nancy Lively, we don't have a mic for you, but you don't need one because you're
No, I don't.
Because you're well-worn, right, Ross? All right, well, the first order of business tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I wonder if it might be nice to have Bill come up and lead us, or would you like to bring your, all of you people up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Why don't you bring your whole gang up and lead us, please, and then we will, we may have a chance to recognize you in a moment.
(inaudible) in the flag of the United States of America and as to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unarrested, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, it's such a pleasure to have the Emergency Rescue Squad group here tonight, and we'll bring you back up in just a few minutes. So, the first order of business tonight, before we get to the consent agenda, needs to be amending our current agenda. We have two people here from V-Trans that were expecting to make a presentation, Laura Stone and Rob Young, and it's a necessary presentation, and they've come a long way to do it, so I would look for a motion, perhaps from my Vice Chair, to amend the agenda to include a, an item after Item 6, called V-Trans Presentation.
Yes, so I'd make a motion to include, to amend the agenda to include V-Trans Presentation on Bridge 6, at, at, before, after Item 6 on our current agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, agenda is amended. We will now move into the consent agenda, which, as everybody knows, is the warrants and the minutes from the previous meeting of June 10th. If you were not able to talk to Stuart Hurd about any concerns you had on the warrants, now would be the time, and if you have any additions to make on the minutes from June 10th, I would listen to them now. Nothing from Jeanne?
Uh huh.
Then there can't be much. Jeanne hasn't picked up anything. Everyone else okay?
Jeanne's pretty good at it, too.
All right, okay. Well, barring that, I would accept a motion to move forward with the consent agenda.
So moved.
And we'll have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are moving on to the next item of business, which is public comment. And the first, so, we're happy to have your comments tonight, let's see, two of you, Rob and Laura, I guess we'll, we'll pick you up later, so I'm going to scratch you off of this part of it here, and this is the part of our evening where we look forward to hearing the comments from citizens, we do ask you to keep your comments to under three minutes, if you would, please, and keep your comments not in the form of questions, if possible, because we are not able to answer a lot of questions at this point, this is a citizens' comment period, but we look forward to hearing what you have to say. So, Mia Schultz?
Hi, good evening. So, my name is Mia Schultz, and we represent a collective of concerned citizens who have been meeting regularly in support of a community oversight board that would investigate allegations of misconduct within the Bennington Police Department. One of our members was here on June 10th, and we asked about the lack of transparency within the process surrounding the planned audit of the Bennington Police. We transcribed this conversation. We asked questions about the planned police audit process, because other than reporting in the banner, we found no publicly available information. Regarding requests for proposals surrounding the police audit at the June 10th Select Board meeting, Mr. Hurd said, and I quote, "There's an RFP that's been out in the community, actually nationwide, for the last 25 days, the due date is June 14th, they will be submitted to the council for the town, and then dispersed to Curtis Reed, to town staff, obviously, and we will get together and review these proposals and determine a vendor to do the police department assessment," end quote. We followed up on Mr. Hurd's assertion via email on June 11th. Mr. Hurd said, quote, "I checked with my staff after the meeting, we did not post it on the web, it was not posted locally, to, due to its specialized nature, our contractor sent a list of firms who specialize in police department assessments, we selected from that list and mailed the RFP directly. It was mailed May 6th, and the date, due date is June 14th. If you would like a copy of the RFP, please let me know," end quote. We would like to now note, for the record, that the information provided by Mr. Hurd at the previous Select Board meeting was not accurate. Question for you, Mr. Hurd, after acknowledged over email that the information that you provided at the last Select Board meeting was not accurate, and that the RFP was not, was in fact not posted on the web, did you then decide to extend the deadline for the proposal beyond June 14th?
No.
On June 11th, Mr. Hurd, after admitting that he did not provide accurate, accurate information at the Select Board meeting on June 10th, said upon being asked over email that there, the following contractors were solicited to place bids for the planned police audit. Those are JW Consulting LLC, Mellow Consulting, Legal and Liability Risk Management, Akronova Crowell, Hillard Heinz, Police Foundation, Greeley and Associates, Sheets Consulting. Is this a complete list?
That's, that's who we sent them to, yes.
And how did you arrive upon this list of contractors?
We looked at those that were regional, those that had expressed interest in the proposal before we did a formal RFP, and essentially sent the RFP to those folks.
Does anyone in the Select Board or employed with the town of Bennington have a relationship with any of these contractors, and if so, what is it?
This is turning into a little bit of an interrogation, I wonder if I could get all of your questions, and maybe we could
I'm almost done.
Okay, so as far as I know, none of us have any relationship to these people, speak now or hold your peace, folks, but as we mentioned at the last meeting, and as I've told Logan and other people who have asked me about this, rather than just doing this RFP ourselves, or rather than having the town staff do it, we decided to engage somebody who had a lot of experience with this, and could be trusted to do a process that was fair and open.
And that actually goes to my last question, which is about Curtis Reed, the person that you have decided to, I guess, run this investigation or audit process. How did you come to that? How did you choose to, choose to employ Mr. Reed for this important endeavor?
So, after this, when, when the first call came out for a, an independent review that came from the Attorney General, I mean, from TJ Donovan, we were, I was, we were poised, the town was poised to go ahead and start our own process, so I'd say town staff was poised to do that. I reached out to Colonel James Baker, who's up in Arlington, and he was part of the Rutland Area Vision Project, which was an effort to try to bring police and community together on things, and we had a fairly, several long conversations about how we might do this, and so we essentially put the brakes on the process that our town manager had started, and he recommended that we contact Curtis Reed, which we did, and so Curtis and I had a number of conversations about slowing the process down and making sure that we didn't rush through the process and just check off boxes, which it's tempting to do when a crisis comes up, or when something like this comes up, it's tempting just to get past it, and so we tried to take Curtis's advice and work with him to slow it down and try to make this a very meaningful, much more meaningful process. For example, looking at the RFPs, not just to look at the price, so we, of course, were very price sensitive, because we work with the taxpayers' money all the time, but also to look at where we would find the most likely useful input from a, from a group, and so Curtis spent a lot of time working with us on thinking through what that might look like, and how we might end up with that end product that was actually something useful. So, for example, it wouldn't have been, it wouldn't have been helpful to do a very narrow study that was perhaps just focused on Kaia Morris, and then have that issue be, for whatever reason, put to bed, but miss a whole nother slew of issues that might really be helpful, in terms of better police practices, or how we might do things in a, in a more evolved way. So, Curtis has, came highly recommended, we did some homework on him, we spent some time visiting with him, and we haven't selected him to do the process for us, we've asked him to be a consultant to help us make sure that we run the process to the best of our ability, so that we really are doing a process, we really are looking at something that's truly inquisitive, and hopefully useful to our police department.
Okay, thank you. That's all we have.
Okay, thank you for coming, and, listen, we, the oversight thing, we, we have, that hasn't been missed on us, you know, and we really are interested in continuing to talk about how that might work. I think at this point, we'd like to try to look at these companies, and these individuals that do these things, and many of them have done very heavy-duty police invest, police analysis across the country, and a lot of them have been through some much more difficult situations than we have here in Bennington, and so hopefully they'll have good suggestions for us about how we make, make it accessible, and how we make it transparent, and how we make it useful to the community and the police department as well. So, I don't want you to feel like we're adversarial with you, we appreciate you caring about this, and, and we care about it, too. We're not experts, we're doing the best we can, and so we tried to hire somebody at some expense to the town to really take us to another level on the evaluation.
Thank you for your notes.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, Mr. Bethel, we haven't heard from you for a long time.
(inaudible).
Would somebody be willing to adjust the mic, please?
Maybe turn it up.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you. It's like a shotgun, she's going to shoot at me.
You never know, Mike.
I know. Good thing you're not the trigger. I'd just like to ask, who's going to pay the fine for the salt shed screw-up?
We have settled that to our satisfaction, Stuart, you want to address how that's, it is all part of the budget at this point, right? Is that an accurate way to say it?
Well, actually, the, there are funds remaining in the bond account, those will be used to mitigate the impact, we've agreed to pay the fine over a 24-month period, the town will be paying the fine, the town is the one that was fined, and therefore, there will be perhaps some funds necessary in year two to make those monthly payments, but that's the plan.
So, that's the plan.
Well, to the Select Board, I don't think that's fair to the citizens of Bennington, because that's their tax money, I'm saying.
Well, I appreciate your concerns, but we don't agree. So, Stuart saved us over a million dollars when he used the town staff to fix up the, to work on the sewer treatment plant, we expect him to do things like that, we expect him to save money for us, and when he does, we don't expect to be able to give him a million dollars for having done well on that.
Excuse me, excuse me, it's my time to talk, okay? You're making excuse for Stuart. Stuart is a select, is hired by the Select Board to do the job for the people. He broke the law, you people didn't even know about it, we should not, citizens of Bennington should not be paying the $21,000. And also, how much is the legal fees Wilmington had to pay to mitigate this?
You may come talk to me about this if you like, but we're not doing interrogation right now, Mike, this is something that we have settled to our satisfaction, we dealt with it in executive session, and the board has settled with it.
I'm asking you a question, how much is the legal fees?
I'm not available to answer that question.
Do you know the legal fees, Mr. Campbell?
I do not know the legal fees.
You do not know the legal fees, and yet you
The legal fees are known.
Excuse me?
The legal fees are known. Mike, I'm not doing a debate with you right now, this is citizens' comment, you may speak, and then you may sit down.
I'm making the comment. You're the one arguing it. I am sitting down, anyway, and you're the one arguing, I am making the comment.
Okay, finish your comments.
The citizens of this town should not be paying the legal fees, should not be paying the fine, under any budget or anything, and the seven of you, not you, because you're new, I guess, the rest of you, all should have known what was going on, and obviously you didn't. You had no idea what he was doing, did you? No, you didn't.
No, we didn't.
No, you did not. So now you're going to push his mistake, or his gambling, as he said in the paper, onto the citizens of Bennington, and the seven of you think that's fair, and you think you went into executive session, and that's transparency, that a citizen of this town? Do you know some people in this town don't even clear $21,000 a year to make? So, if you think you guys are all proud of this, I think you ought to be embarrassed, and you ought to go back into executive session and figure out how much he can pay, and maybe some of you can pay, and Mr. Monks is paid very well to protect us from this bull, and he didn't do it. So I did say my piece, and you all can sit there and smug and everything else, but you did a piss-poor job of this, and you all know it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay. We are now moving on to deep breath, number four, and this is really something that we have been looking forward to. I'm not quite sure how we'd like to do this, but we are lucky enough to have Dan Beatty here today, and I wonder, Dan, if you might like to come up to the podium, and tell us why you're here, and, you know what, why don't we bring the entire Emergency Rescue Squad up behind you? How would that be?
Yes.
We know you people hate that, which is why we're going to ask you to do that. We're lucky tonight, because it's a, it's a very pleasant evening, and apparently there are no accidents out there, and we're
Let's keep that in for the next few minutes, anyway.
You better have us water.
Well, Mr. Chair, good evening, and ladies and gentlemen, Select Board, thank you very much for giving us a little time this evening. My name is Dan Beatty, and I'm the Emergency Medical Services Chief for the Department of Health, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Department of Health, and in particular Vermont EMS. Each year, Vermont EMS awards several annual awards, especially during EMS Week, in honor of the hard-working men and women of the Vermont EMS system. These awards are nominated through a peer recognition group in Vermont EMS, and typically they are hard fought, we typically get numerous nominations, and we, we have to go into battles to decide who the, who the winners are. In this particular case, I'm here tonight to talk about the ambulance service of the year. We have 94 transporting ambulance services in Vermont, we received eight nominations this year for ambulance service of the year, and this is the first time in my entire time with the Department of Health where no one has had any question in terms of who the award winner would be. These awards are handed out in a variety of different categories, we certainly look for clinical competency, we want to make sure that that ambulance service is doing a good job taking care of patients, their charge, we look for satisfaction among the community of EMS providers, and certainly the ambulance services that win this award have that. But this year in particular, I would like to take a moment and highlight the award winners, because I think this ambulance service goes above and beyond the routine clinical care and the routine satisfaction of their customers. The ambulance service winner this year has proven to be a role model for all the other ambulance services in Vermont, both in their vision, in their competency, in, in their leadership in the system, and that, among many other things, by the way, is why no one in that group of selectors had any doubt in terms of who this ambulance service award should go to. So, on behalf of the Vermont Department of Health, and on behalf of all of the other hard-working men and women of the Vermont EMS system, I'd like to recognize Bennington Rescue as this year's ambulance service of the year.
Excellent. So, Bill, one of the, one of the problems with not having Forrest here is that you're up, buddy. You got your minute here.
You get 20 minutes.
Looking at what time you want.
I promise to make it a minute or less. The reason that we even have the opportunity to win this award is, we have the support of our community, and most of all, we have the support of an awesome crew. We try and provide as much opportunity for our crew to be involved in every aspect of our organization, and this is how it pays off for us and for our community. There's no better group you're going to find around here.
That's great, we agree, and we are so thankful, I think this, I speak for this board when I say, we're so thankful to have such a high-quality, hard-working Emergency Rescue Squad at this, and everything is harder now than it used to be, and yet you all just keep doing a better job, so thank you very much, and thank you very much for coming down to give them the award, we're very grateful.
Thanks for making time.
All right, great, take care.
Thank you.
Thanks again. And while we were doing that, somebody's beeper went off, and a couple of people went dashing out, so I apologize to those people that had to leave early. We are now moving on to agenda item number five, and so, Robin, we are looking forward to your presentation, you, we're happy to have you either at the podium or at the mic, whichever is more comfortable for you.
Well, I was trying to decide if you wanted to see a head of hair behind the podium or behind the beeper, so I think I'll go to the podium.
Okay, great. Feel free to adjust the mic in any way, or we can help you with that. All right.
So, like all early childhood people, I come with stuff.
Snack?
Stuff.
Cookies?
I'll have my young children, and just, I also have some
Thank you.
I'm failing too, because I didn't do a good job.
Yeah, I think you did a great job.
Anybody, anyone who would like, just Bennington pages, I can have some of those as well, I guess, yes.
So, so now I'm a head of hair behind the microphone. So I will try to be brief, but I happen to love this work, I'm Robin Stromgren, and I work for a statewide organization called Building Bright Futures, which tells you nothing. I am contracted through Sunrise to do this work here in Bennington, but it's really talking about young children and their families, because without families, children are not going to survive. So basically, the Building Bright Futures work has a statewide regional plan, which is, talks about, children are healthy, children are learning, and children are supported by their communities and families. So that's the crux of the work that we do, but I wanted to let you know how we do our work. Bennington also has a regional plan that has strategies and actions underneath those large bullets, and that plan has been in place, not the exact same plan, but since 2005, we've had a regional plan, and our, the work that we do is through that, that regional plan. I like to think about the work that we do as right at the center of a daisy, because it's, the work for early childhood is not just childcare, it's health, mental health, early care, which is childcare, education, which is kindergarten through third grade, and home visiting. So without those pieces, we can't do our work together, and it's really, when we look at our regional plan, we're looking at where we overlap, we're not doing the work of somebody else, but we're looking for those pieces. One of the conversations I could tell you about is 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten, which some of our children are doing, it's through the libraries, but that's been the work of the council, is to find the books, qualify them, along with our library partners. And so we have kids who've read 1,000 books before kindergarten, because the research shows that children who read 1,000 books or have read to them, which is more likely the case, and even a number of the same book 1,000 times would work, but it'd be pretty boring for the parent, that children are more ready for school, they're ready to learn because they have that visual piece, they have that hearing piece. So we work both at the state and local level, I have to re-put my glasses, even though I put big print here, it wasn't big enough, so, but the mission of the Bennington Early Childhood Council is working together for the good of children and families. The vision is the Building Bright Futures Council is a shared forum where parents, administrators, and direct service providers are committed to respectful, safe, and non-judge, non-judgmental, forget it, non-judgmental relationships, to support positive outcomes for young children and families in Bennington and the surrounding area. So the, the How are Vermont's Young Children booklet that I handed out talks about statewide issues, it talks about what the overview of the states, but there is a Bennington page, but it's really the Bennington region. And I think that that's, you know, the ways we think about how do we affect change in the coming year, or in the coming five years, because a year is not enough time, and so when you take a look at some of the words that we're hearing right now, the big one is trauma, we hear a lot about trauma, and I'm not saying that trauma doesn't exist, but early childhood is about building resilience for families and children. It is giving our children and their families the skills they need to cocoon our kids and make them strong. It's not that they're not going, they will know how to handle what comes at them if they feel have that resilience piece. But, you know, the way we do that as a community is by building what they call protective factors, some of you may have heard of this, but that is parental resilience, so your parent is in a good place. Social connections, you have somebody to connect to, the Catamount Connections place was a good place for that to happen, parks, experiences, that we have, people have the knowledge of parenting and child development, so the expectations are at the right level. We, at times, have concrete areas of support, so if somebody's without food, there is a way to get food to them, or they need healthcare, there's a way to do that. And the last one is to build social-emotional competence in our kids, and what we know about social-emotional competence is that kids who have got good social-emotional skills are also more ready for school than kids who don't. You can tell me if I've talked too long, because I have a tendency to get going on this. So, I just want to let you know that one of the big issues that you see in Bennington when you look at the, the Bennington data is the number of children living in poverty. And our numbers have kind of changed, but that's, one of the reasons is that there is a smaller number of children, so where we had a higher level of children living in poverty, now that we have a lower actual number, when you counterbalance that, it becomes 42% rather than 52%, so it dropped 10 points last, in the last couple of years, and it's not because we're doing a better job, it's because the numerator and the denominator have changed. But, we have, in our regional plan, one of our outcomes is that we are going to become a trauma-informed, trauma-sensitive region, so we know how to interface with kids and their families in a way that doesn't re-traumatize them. And a lot of that we get to do just through professional development, so as a community and a region, we work really hard for people to gain knowledge, skills, and change their attitudes, and we do that by professional development within this region that focuses on looking at relationships, building skills, we use the Deveraux Early Childhood Assessment, which is out of Pennsylvania, which is a We use the Deveraux Early Childhood Assessment, which is out of Pennsylvania, which is a normed assessment, to really give us the skills and take a look at what's happening. The problem with anything that we do in the world, when you look at really short-term outcomes, we don't have good longitudinal studies. So, we really aren't following kids from kinder-, you know, birth to, through eight, the same kid, because their numbers change. So, we don't have that. So, we really don't know, anecdotally, we know what's working, but we really don't have the data behind it. So, the other thing I would like you to look at when we take a look like children ready for school, they're looking at five developmental areas where kids are going to be ready for school. And poverty is a huge issue with kids being ready for school. So, if you look at the statewide numbers, there's a big divide for kids who are on free and reduced lunch, are almost less ready for school than their peers who are not receiving it by about 15 percentage points. So, when you look at the Bennington numbers of kids ready for school, which I'm going to tell you is a screening, it's not an assessment, and it's subjective, so it's harder sometimes to do. But when you look at the amount of poverty in a town like Bennington, it affects how ready our kids are for school. Doesn't affect how they're going to do in the third grade because there'll be supports behind them, but there are, many of them are starting further behind than their peers. And to help us be a good early childhood world, we use the Vermont Early Childhood Standards, which are also in the process of being normed, but they are actions, ways to set up a classroom, the ways we look at things. We also know that we're looking to increase the quality of our early care and education sites, both homes and centers. And we use a program called STARS. And in those STARS, there are five-star centers here in Bennington. One of them is Head Start, Bennington Early Childhood Center is another. There are a bunch, and I decided I wouldn't go through the whole list. But Bennington has worked really hard to ensure that we are increasing quality, and some of the way we increase quality is through mentoring as well as through the professional And one of the other things which I'm really going to skitter away from, which is the number of children in DCF custody, because that's not my bailiwick. It is a result of many things that are happening, both within our state system and the increase in opioid exposure, and the fact that our DCF colleagues need to be really careful about kids in their custody. I'm just going to ask you, this is a quick overview. I could go on for much longer than you'd like to be here, but I'd like to ask if there are any questions or clarifications that you would like.
The paper states that there's an increase of 39.7% of children living in poverty, but it says also below, living below 200% of the federal poverty level, which is $24,000.
Correct.
Jackie, I'm sorry. I'm going to ask you to come up to the mic, introduce yourself, and we'll go to board questions in a minute, so.
So, my name is Jackie Kelly. I'm from Bennington. And the question I have is, this paper states that children living in poverty has increased 39.7%. And the federal guidelines say that 39% is 200% of the guidelines. So, does that mean that the actual number is 19.5?
I can't answer that. I'll have to figure that out and come back to you.
Well, I'm just wondering if this was inflated, you know, with the 200% rather than the 100%.
Well, 100% of poverty is what children need.
25,000.
What families need to be living at 200, well, 100% of poverty to get to go to Head Start. So, 200% of poverty is just-
$50,000.
That's per family of four.
Yes.
So-
Well, so is, so is the other statistic for 25. Because for an individual, it's $36 per day. For, for a family of four, it's $39 a day.
So, I'm not sure that I understand your question, Jackie.
Oh, the question is, was it purposely inflated 200%?
I think that that's a guideline that they were looking at, and that's what they used across the board. So, I can't answer that, but I can get the answer for you.
Thank you.
Are there questions from the board at this point before we go, before we go further with this?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Thank you for this, but I was just wondering if we were to go on like the website or another source, only because these say 2016, is that the last time this-
It takes them a while to clear, clean, what they call, clean the data? And to, and so, it's about a two-year delay to get the data.
Would you guess that we're trending similar from 10 to 16, kind of like in that-
You mean, the number of children born?
Well, I, I would guess I would say that number would be down.
Yes.
Just going with a guess there. But do you think the numbers are, I don't want to say as bad, like are they, it looks like if you go from 10 to 16 on all these, I know you said we're changing the numbers a little bit, but we're not trending in a good direction.
The numbers are definitely dropping when, when you look at the, the number of children we have under the age of nine. And the reason they use under the age of nine is that the federal government says early childhood now goes through age eight, which is the third grade, up to the third grade. So, so that's why that number has changed a little bit, but it is because at third grade, kids become far more academic and they're looked at differently.
Do you think that even if you, you didn't have a decrease in, in the number of kids, that then we're trending in a strong direction with all these programs, or we're trending still in a direction that's, you know, we're trying to fight the tide? Just give me, you're in the industry.
Yeah, I think that in many ways, we are fighting the tide. But I also believe that there is a lot of really promising work that's happening, both statewide and locally. And it's, it is, the smaller numbers in Bennington and in the state really affect what we're seeing as far as kids in poverty, kids in DCF custody. So, I, but the trend is going down, I hate to say that, in Vermont. We're losing population and we're, especially in this region.
So, Robyn, do you, so we have fewer kids, but are, you know, are we making, the number of kids in DCF custody is going up, our poverty rate is not, it sounds like our poverty rate is not really changing.
Correct.
It's sort of a, just the magic of math. So, so our, the quality of our programming is going up.
Correct.
But it sounds like we're, we haven't cracked the nut of, of kids being in poverty and being in situations that are not making it easy to build resilience.
Correct.
Is that accurate?
That's correct. But sometimes you have to remember, kids who are in quality childcare programs, that helps with them building their resilience. And a lot of times, because childcare programs work directly with parents, then they develop a rapport that allows the parent to learn some new skills and be supported in learning those new skills.
And isn't, isn't it the case that, I mean, Bennington County is, is quite the star in terms of STARS program, yes?
Yes, that is true. That is true. And in the STARS, they give you the numbers from one to five, and I went on the website trying to figure, find out what we were at currently at three, four, and five stars, but the website wasn't answering me today, so I can't do that. But we have the highest numbers of three, four, and five-star programs.
In the state?
In the state.
That's good.
Which is, yeah, so there's a-
Read that out of this, but I-
There's a lot of very positive work going on, but everything is small. And, and you, and it's difficult when you're looking at small bits of data to really make sure that that data is not an aberration of some sort, that you're taking a look at it as the whole versus part. So, really Vermont, even though we chunk it out, almost really because we're so small, should be looking at the entire state because then we're 629,000 people versus 35,000. So, it's, but it is important because we can look at the trends every year and see what's happening, and we can talk about a local council about what things have happened and what differences we're seeing for our children and families.
Okay. Other questions? No?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead, Jean.
I don't want to speculate, but I'm, in my own mind, I'm thinking about what is it specifically about living in poverty? What, what are the outcomes? Is, you know, it's nutrition. Are there things that I'm probably not thinking of?
Right. Food insecurity is one. The fact that many people in poverty are not living in their own home. They live comparison home. The kids may not have backpacks or food that they need, you know, so it's, I think it's, when I took a look at the numbers of the difference of where, how kids were ready and those with, those who were, families who were not on free and reduced lunch and those that were, it's really, I thought 15% across the board was stark. But you also have to remember, there's transportation, people can't get to where they need to get to. There's, so there are all these little things about transportation, and there is also, there are different skill sets. A lot of our services are set up, and I hate to say this, but are set up, are normed on people getting to places on time, and that doesn't always happen if your car breaks down. So, I can't answer more than that, but it is the insecurity of life that adds-
In total?
In total.
Okay. And you might not be able to answer this question.
Thank you.
Is the rise in poverty directly related to the opioid crisis, or is there, are there other factors?
Actually, the, it used to be that Bennington was 52% of our children under 200% of poverty lived, under 200% of poverty, were living in poverty. So, it was higher a couple of years ago. But I do believe that is the numerator and the denominator rather than actual numbers, and they didn't have the actual numbers.
Okay. I just wanted to share, I participated in the program Resilience that they presented, I think it was, was UCS?
Mm-hmm.
Presented at the library. I kept hearing about trauma, and I didn't really have a good understanding of what it was. And I would encourage anyone who has an opportunity to participate in that program, it's called Resilience, it is worth the time. It really, really helps you understand what childhood trauma is and how it affects children throughout their entire lives.
Correct.
Yeah, it was fascinating.
And I love the term, thinking about resilience-
Yeah.
-and thinking about hope rather than trauma. And I've had adverse childhood experiences, and poverty is one of those experiences. I think it's more important to focus on how we might be able to make some positive change. And I agree with you.
Yep. Thank you.
So, Robyn, we, you know, there's a lot of data in this. We have not reviewed this as a, individually, so it's not possible for us to give you a lot of very intelligent questions about this until we have looked at it. I will say, as a lay user of data, it's sometimes confusing in that there are so many sources of it, and they don't always seem to line up. So, there are, there are many other data points that look somewhat good for this community. So, I wonder if you can sort out for us which, which of these we should really be focusing on at this point.
You know, I think, since I think about hope, I think that when we take a look at the number of quality childcare centers and homes that we have, that's a positive. When you take a look at the amount of professional development that's done as a region, so we have a common language, common expectation, that's good. You know, the fact that we are looking to think about how best to support our kids and families with an actual plan, knowing that you're not going to get it all, you know, we have some great, what I call, vision outcomes, but you're not, we can't do that work. But at least if it's on the table, if you know that women suffer from maternal depression and that affects not just the babies, but kids as they grow up, then we need to do something about that. But it is the combination of the agencies, programs, hospitals, that are doing the work together, and that's where you're going to see the difference. And, and the other thing I would say is that this community is really good at working together extraordinarily. People are not afraid to put their hat into the ring and, and do work. So, that to me is a positive with the resources that we have. And I understand that's a lot of data.
It is, and, and it's hard to square it with some of the other data, you know, that we receive. So, we receive data from the Regional Commission, and we sort through that stuff too. So, for example, median household income goes from 38,259 and 213 to 46,276 and 217. And so, we get data like that, that looks like, oh, we're on the right trend here. Or we look at the data that says we're down from 52.7 to 43.7, and, and we think, oh, we're on, we're on the right trend here, but-
But it's medium income, and Jackie's right, you know, a family of four living below 200% of poverty is $50,000, which is, so you think about what we know and how we can do that work, you know, the, and, so we're, we're moving in the right direction as long as we make sure that we cross-reference some of this, and that's an important thing to do.
It'd be nice to have you, we haven't gotten to the end of the book yet. We've all just been sort of flipping back and forth between counties to see how we're doing compared to other counties. But it does look like there's a section in the end, which is recommendations. So, do you have anything that you would, are you going-
So, those are statewide recommendations.
And do any of these particularly resonate for you in, in terms of your knowledge of Bennington and things that we should be adopting or as a select board or a town government more actively pursuing?
So, let me go back and really think about that.
Okay.
Because I, like you, I hadn't thought about what I thought you should do. I actually think having the knowledge of what's going on within the early childhood community is important. I know the work that's happening with bringing Head Start downtown is an important first step for many, many families and for this community. So, you're doing some of that work already, you know, and I could have, just, I decided to have a conversation rather than, this is the data, this is what we're doing. But it's all, when you think about every agency, select boards, everybody has work that they have to do. So, the work that we do together is kind of outside of the, the normal work, but would support the work of an agency such as CCB or whatever other agency, the hospital, you know, some of it is that small things. And there are lots of committees that are part of the early childhood world, and sometimes I, as the representative of early child, go to other meetings, you know, just, so I can answer that question better, but I'm not sure that this was set up for me to come with and ask.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's, that's, I don't-
I didn't have my hand out.
I didn't mean to press for that. If, if there was something that I was wondering about in this whole inquiry, and I do, I continue to wonder about it, Jim and I talk, we all talk about it, but there are a number of entities that deliver services in Bennington, and, and sometimes from the outside, it seems like they're all separate, and it's unclear how well or how thoroughly they work together. And so, I've heard a little bit about the coalition of trying to pull many of these agencies together to make sure there's not redundancy and overlap, and that there, there are the benefits of synergy and efficiency. And it feels a little bit like that might be the hope, or some of the hope for us, is to begin to really get everybody, I think I hear you saying, get everybody working, pulling in the same direction, so to speak.
Exactly, exactly. And I, you know, it's difficult from the outside looking in to understand exactly what- And I, you know, it's difficult from the outside looking in to understand exactly what the parameters of each agency or service are because the state and federal government says, these are the things you must accomplish to get you, your bit of money. But it is the work that's outside and sometimes all of us throw a little bit money on the table to see if we can have good kindergarten transition, you know, what are those pieces that we can do by doing a little bit, not the whole lot by ourselves? And, and normally around the Early Childhood Council table, we have at least 20 people. I mean, it's a big group of people who come and have, some of it's a learning experience. It's not a meeting like this, it's more of a, a learning experience and getting on this, looking for that, looking for that same language.
And it does look like, I mean, around that table, you have both early ed providers, but you also have SVSU representation so that, you know, looking at that transition from early ed to elementary school.
Right.
Seems to be very present and quite active.
But the health department's there, the UCS is there, so it is, sometimes we had town government there. So it really is a pretty wide range of people because with, if you get too narrow, then you're not going to accomplish anything because you're all too, know each other too well. So nobody's going to be challenging you as to how you're doing your work.
Is there a dream that you have about what hasn't happened that you would love to see or is that, is that similar to Donald's question in terms of something that you need to think about?
I think some of the things, you know, it seems to be like a yo-yo, not, no, like a slinky, you know, things get accomplished and then we kind of fall back like this and that, but we don't go all the way back and so we come back up again. So I would like to really figure out a way to mentor early childhood programs that are in homes in a better way or anybody so that practice of working with kids improves. And when you think about people who are working by themselves in a room with lots of children and they're doing a wonderful job, but sometimes it's very nice to have somebody say, I like what you're doing. Or I have another idea. So people are able to, not to challenge themselves, but also to learn from somebody else. And you don't have to be more qualified, but sometimes it's just another set of eyes. So those are two good questions that I'll take home.
Great. You know, I think we, we need to wrap up, but I, I would love to invite you to come back and to stay in touch with us about things that we can do.
Yeah.
So we are a, a select board, we are town government, we have a very, very strong interest in this, we don't have a lot of money, we, but, and yet we know that these are probably some of the most important investments we can make in our community. So I think if there are ways that we can be helpful, particularly ways that, that involve convening or involve helping out structurally with things, we'd, we'd be interested to know what those are.
Perfect.
Robyn, is your email, are we, are you reachable if we, I don't want you to give out your email address.
No, but I probably, I'm not sure it's there, but I can give you my card.
Okay, great.
And I just wanted to say, you're, you're brilliant. This has been really helpful and thank you so much.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Robyn.
The head of hair behind the microphone.
Thank you very much for giving us that overview.
Thank you.
We appreciate that and this is part of a, a larger series that the vice chair and I have been working on and the whole board's been working on that we'll be taking on on a roughly monthly basis to look at various, various things that affect our community. So thank you for being one of our first, yeah.
Thank you.
So the next item on our docket is to make a decision to fill the vacant board seat that Carson will be leaving. And so this, this item is an item that is carried over from our last meeting at which the board tasked me with talking to a potential candidate and he is here tonight. Thank you for coming, Bruce. Bruce Lee Clark, as known to many. And I did have a chance to talk with him and he agreed that if we would like him to step in on a, on a short-term basis, that is until the next election, he would be glad to do it. So if this board would like, I would accept a motion and I guess I would, I don't know if we have to word this carefully at all, but I guess it would be starting July 1st, right Stuart? Is that the way we would do this?
Yes. Since Carson will be vacating the seat effective June 30th, July 1 is appropriate.
Okay.
And I think it would be appropriate for that guy.
We'll meet at midnight at the forepointers.
Yeah. Do a little split, yeah.
Handshake.
So I'd be happy to make that motion to have Mr. Lee Clark fill, beginning January, or July 1st, fill the remainder of Carson's term.
Okay.
I would second that.
Motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any conversation? Any discussion?
I think this would be an appropriate time to give our thanks and appreciation.
Let's, let's, let's wait, let's vote first, shall we? See if, see how the vote goes. It might get bad.
I can't leave town.
Be ready though, Bruce. We might ask you. So I, I would, I guess I'm going to call this vote. All in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I think I am staying in my vote.
You want to abstain? Yeah, so.
If not, though, I'm in favor.
Bruce, thank you very much. Would you just step up to the mic and say three-word, no, say very short introduction and we'll have a chance to get to know you a little better on the first meeting in July.
Sure. Well, first, let me just say thank you to the board for your confidence and also to Carson for his service. I've been really appreciative of his presence on the board and thank you. And we are the poorer for your advancement, but we, I, I personally would send you up there to do the good work that you're going to do. And that's really all I have to say now.
All right. Good. Well, we look forward to seeing you in early July.
Right.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you. All right. The, before we move on to setting the water and sewer rates, we are moving to item 6A, which is the transportation folks, Laura and Rob. And please tell us, we're not quite sure why you're here tonight, Stuart knows, but it's a little bit of a surprise to us, so we're, you're going to have to fill us in on what you need to know.
Can you get the projector on?
Oh, boy.
You're asking a lot.
Hey, Dan?
Can you help them with the projector?
While I apologize to the board and to Laura and Rob, this is something that, Bridge Number Six is the bridge out in front of Miller's Toll. It is a bridge that has been discovered to be failing and we had hoped that we would be moving forward on this bridge sooner than this, but nonetheless, they're here tonight to present the project to you, I believe, that's what happens. And this meeting was a date they selected some time ago and unfortunately, I misplaced the email. I normally put those, that information into my booklet so that I have it and I have to apologize to them and I apologize to you as well.
Looks like it's warming up. So this is an interactive presentation.
Oh. Did you bring pieces of a bridge with you?
Yeah. Basically, there are some slides up that will get folks, like the letter on the computer that they get some better information about who's here and what folks think without having to jump up and down.
Is there winners and losers?
No.
This looks expensive. Does the state pay for this?
I'm sure they do.
Yeah.
I feel like Jeopardy.
I'm not sure I like this. Let's see how it goes.
We use them in schools.
I thought, I thought they were only used in like rooms with 300 people.
No, correct. Before Snapchat, I used to have my students use it with their phones, but now with Snapchat, I can.
You can do this kind of stuff all over.
Okay. So this is the alternatives presentation meeting for Bridge Six over the Loomsack River on Vermont Route 9. I have a lot of slides here, so I'm going to try to go through them as quick as possible. If you need to slow me down at any point, just slow me down. So I'm Laura Stone, I'm the V-Trans scoping engineer. This is Rob Young, he will be the project manager. Purpose of the meeting, we want to provide an understanding to our approach to the project, talk about the scoping process, the alternatives that we looked at, the constraints for the discuss our recommended alternative and really provide an opportunity to ask questions, voice concerns about the project. Here's a location map, is located right here. There's an aerial view, again, the bridge is right here, you almost wouldn't notice that there is a bridge here, right between Morgan and Beach Street. So a meeting overview, we're going to talk about the V-Trans project development process. Again, the existing conditions, the alternatives we considered, we want to talk about maintenance of traffic for the bridge project, the overall schedule for the project, so when we have this for funding, for construction. Give a summary and again, questions at the end, but you can ask questions anytime throughout the presentation. This is just a quick chart that shows the V-Trans project development process. It's really just to show that we're in this really early stage here called project definition. The project's been funded, we've identified the resources, the historic resources, the archaeological resources, utilities, that sort of, that sort of stuff. We've evaluated alternatives, we've come up with a recommendation and we really want to build consensus for our recommended alternative. Once the town decides how they want to move forward with the project, that's when we'll go into project design, that's when you would see plans, quantities, estimates, that's when we're going to do the right-of-way process if it's needed, that's when we're going to get environmental permits, that sort of stuff. So first clicker question, who are you representing? And you can pick, this is the only question, you can pick two. A, municipal official, B, resident of Bennington, C, resident of neighboring town, D, emergency services, local business, independent organization, press or other.
Can we touch more than one?
Yep. This is the only one that you can, you can pick multiple.
How you doing, Jeanie?
So far, it's okay.
Okay. So moving on, how often do you use this segment of Vermont Route 9? A, daily, B, weekly, C, monthly, D, rarely, or E, never?
Uh, we can.
And I'm going to keep moving. How often do you walk over the bridge? Daily, weekly, monthly, rarely, or never?
Chad, I've seen you at Miller's Toll a lot. You better, you better be pushing at least daily.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out where apart from.
It's an anonymous survey.
Similarly, how often do you bike over the bridge?
Some people walk over the bridge.
I, I should have that as a, you know, F. And lastly, what's your reason for attending this meeting? A, specific concern, general interest, live in close vicinity, or other? I think we were unexpected here tonight, so maybe other.
What, you think?
And moving on, so before, before I move on, here's some descriptions of the terms that we use. The bridge deck is the part that you ride on, that you drive your car on. The beams are, are what's holding up the deck. A lot of times, we consider the beams and the deck together, we call that the superstructure. This part that the beams are bearing on is called the bridge seat and the foundations are also sometimes referred to as a substructure or abutment. So Act 153 of the 2012 legislative session, per Act 153, the local share is reduced by 50% if a bridge is rehabilitated versus replacement. Again, the local share is reduced 50% for closing the road to traffic during construction. So these are the different share options, this is, it is Vermont Route 9, but it's located on a class one town, a class one segment and so there is a local share in this project. Here's a picture looking west over the bridge. The roadway's classified as a principal arterial, it is on the national highway system and it's a class one town highway. It's a 46-foot-long reinforced concrete T-beam owned by the town of Bennington, so again, there will be local share and constructed in 1923. Looking east over the bridge, there are wide sidewalks over the bridge, about nine-foot wide sidewalks on both sides. It's located in a densely populated area and the bridge is, is skewed quite a bit. I'll also note here, there are quite a bit of utilities, aerial utilities crossing over the road and they run alongside the, the bridge there. So existing conditions, the substructure and superstructure, right now, they're rated in fair condition. There's significant deterioration of the concrete, there's a lot of voids developing, there's some exposed reinforcing steel, a lot of, a lot of spalling, which means the concrete's kind of falling off in places. There are settlement cracks in one of the abutments, there's drainage features on the bridge that are leaking and saturating concrete members, which accelerates the deterioration. And the bridge is extremely substandard hydraulically, just because of all the constraints on all four of the quadrants, there's really not much we can do about that. We like to have one foot of freeboard at the design storm. Here we have negative four feet of freeboard, which means that the bridge is inundated during the flood storm. Condition ratings, so right now, the deck is rated a six, so that's this area right here. The superstructure is rated a five, fair, this is some of the worst areas of the deterioration. You can see there's quite a bit of reinforcing steel showing. Also to note in this picture, there are buried utilities mounted on the underside of the bridge, there's both water and sewer that will need to be relocated as part of any project. And the substructure is rated a five, fair. Let's go through some pictures. Here's a picture of the substructure, you can see there's efflorescence here, some cracking. Again, you can see that superstructure has some exposed rebar. There's some scour here in the abutment, so that concrete's being washed away. Again, there's some voids here, some rebar sticking out in the abutment. Here's the wing wall in the southwest quadrant, it is adjacent to a house with a brick foundation right here. So that just means we want to be careful that we, we don't have, you know, too much vibration or anything as part of the bridge project, we want to, we want to preserve that. Resources, looking downstream, we do have northern Long Yard bat habitat, that really just means that we're restricted in the times of year that we can cut trees. There's archaeological resources, historic resources, both the bridge and the former Safford-Morgan House at 722 Main Street are considered historic. In terms of the bridge, we've been told that any bridge rail will really be acceptable for our historic folks, it's really, they're going to work with the town to decide what goes back there. It is within FEMA-mapped floodplains, there's a hazardous waste site, which is the mobile station, and there are utilities. Because this is a class one town highway, any work that involves the relocation of the utilities, that's, it's a participating cost. And so if the town has a 5% project share cost, then we would pay the, for the design and the relocation, the town will only have to pay 5% of that, that total cost. This is from our finance and maintenance agreement, there's the hazardous waste site located in, at the mobile station. This really says that if there is hazardous contamination found in the soils, that is a 100% town share to remediate those, those soils. So what we would do early on in the project is take some test pourings on either end of the bridge, see if we have anything. If we don't find any contamination, no big deal. If we do find contamination, then as part of the project, we would try to limit the amount of soil disturbance. Here's the existing conditions, here's the bridge right here, so this is a layout if you're up in the sky looking down on the bridge. The bridge is in gray, we have, the sidewalks are shown in pink. We have, the sidewalks are shown in pink. The existing town right-of-way is this green line here. It's a little bit hard to see. And we have property lines are these purple dashed lines right here. We also have utilities that run here, here, here. There's utilities all over the place. So existing typical section, currently, it is a, there are eight-foot shoulders and 12-foot travel ways, travel lanes, and nine-foot sidewalks, which exceeds the Vermont State The existing profile, so it is fairly flat over the bridge. Design criteria and considerations. There is an average daily traffic of 9,800 vehicles per day, so that's really high daily traffic volumes. A design hourly volume of 1,000 vehicles per hour, so that's the peak hour. That's what you would plan to see in the morning rush hour or the evening rush hour. Percent trucks of 4.6, design speed of 30 miles an hour, and again, there are utilities. So all alternatives considered have an eight-foot, 12-foot typical section, so those are 12-foot travel lanes with eight-foot shoulders. That's what is out there currently. We would maintain the sidewalk on both sides. So we really looked at three different alternatives. A minor rehabilitation, which has a 15-year design life, a superstructure replacement, which has a 30-year design life, and then a full bridge replacement, which would have 100-year design life, and I'll go over those in detail.
Did you skip the first two right there?
No.
Which were no action?
So no action. There is additional maintenance required.
I like that option.
Within 10 years. You do like that option.
He's done, doesn't he?
Was the option, this sounds really expensive.
So there is additional maintenance required in the next 10 years, so we wouldn't recommend no action or do nothing. And this just says that all alternatives do have that 812 typical. So alternative one, a minor rehabilitation. That would really mean any concrete that's spalling, any rebar that's exposed, we would, we would remove that and then have concrete repair of those areas. The typical section would really look exactly how it looks now. The railing would remain in place. Here's the layout. Really, nothing's, nothing's changed. There would be concrete repair of both the superstructure and the substructure. We would do new bridge joints and put a membrane and pave, which would protect the bridge from further deterioration. And again, that would have about a 15-year design life.
Are you going to talk about what the time, how long each one of these would take to do, or?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So alternative two, a superstructure replacement. Again, we would be maintaining the existing typical section. The railing would likely change. We would be keeping the substructures and just replacing the beams and the deck. And so the railings would change, but really, to the rider, it wouldn't look much different. Here's the layout. Again, we're not planning on changing the width at all. This would be new deck and beams on the existing substructures. Would have concrete repair as needed for the substructures. There were the, those spalling areas. There was a bit of scour at the, at the footings of those abutments, so we would fix that up. We would expect that to have a 30-year design life based on the existing conditions of those substructures. And alternative three, the full bridge replacement. Again, the typical section is the same for all three. And here's the layout. It does look the same. This would include all new bridge components. So it would be new deck, new beams, new substructures. Because this is on the national highway system, we would want to design this for 100-year design life, which means stainless steel rebar. Again, it does not meet the minimum hydraulic standard. There's really not much we can do here. We can lengthen the bridge a couple feet, but in terms of rating, raising the grade, you just, you can't raise it four feet there.
Do options number one and two receive the 50% discount on the town share?
They do.
But not number three?
So options one and two would have a 2.5% town share if the bridge was closed during construction, and option three would have a 5% share if it was closed during construction.
And if it was not?
Then it would be a 10% share for the full bridge replacement and 5% share for the rehabilitation options. And we're going to be posting this presentation online probably tomorrow morning, and so you can refer back to it.
I would be shocked if you're not going to be making this presentation again.
We might.
Right. A lot of people should hear this.
Yep. So the proposed profile would really be, we wouldn't be changing the grade of the road at all. We'd want to just maintain what's out there. We've been told from the hydraulics folks that we cannot lower this low beam, that's the lowest part of the bridge, at all. If anything, they would like us to choose a more shallow superstructure to make that, make the hydraulics a little better. What we're recommending here is a full bridge replacement. Would have that 12-foot, eight-foot typical section with nine-foot, nine-foot sidewalks on both sides, a span length of approximately 50 feet. Does remain hydraulically inadequate, although it will be improved. Shallow superstructure type would be chosen in design. And again, 100-year design life is what we're recommending for this structure. So maintenance of traffic. Options considered. We considered an off-site detour. Short-term lane closures would really only be applicable to the minor rehabilitation option, and that would be short-term lane closures during off-peak hours due to the high traffic volumes. And we also considered phased construction. So phased construction is when you work on one half of the bridge while maintaining traffic on the other side of the bridge, and then you switch traffic over onto the new side of the bridge while you work on the other side. Because of the high traffic volumes, reducing down to one lane alternating would create a level of service F, so we do have to maintain two lanes of traffic here at all times. So what we could do is maintain one lane of traffic as well as pedestrians on one side and detour one way, or we can maintain two ways of traffic and detour pedestrians.
We have a question from the audience, but I'm afraid we're not going to be able to hear it if you don't come to the mic, Mary. Are you willing to do that, or, no?
My question is, were the businesses in that area notified at this meeting tonight? So like, if we can, why is this coming around?
The question is, have the businesses been notified at this meeting tonight? I think it's fair to say the answer is no.
Clearly.
So.
Yes.
Absolutely. Yep.
Yep.
We didn't know this presentation was happening.
Yeah. Thank you.
So road closure, the detour, because it is on a Class 1 town highway, the detour would be signed by the state. The detour distance would be 5.4 miles end-to-end. This would be a detour that would be appropriate for both, both passenger cars and large trucks. We would recommend a 60-day closure with incentive disincentive. So incentive disincentive means if the contractor goes over the 60 days, they pay, they pay us money. If they go under the 60 days, we pay them some extra money. We would allow nighttime work because we would want to meet that 60-day closure period. And again, the local share is reduced by 50% per Act 153. So here's the detour that we would propose. It would be Vermont Route 9 to US Route 7 and 279 back to Vermont Route 9. Again, this is appropriate for trucks and adds 2.7 miles to the through route. Because there's sidewalks on the bridge, we need to maintain pedestrian traffic. Here's what we would recommend for the pedestrian detour. Be Vermont Route 9 to Safford Street to Gage Street and Bradford Street, back to Vermont Route 9, which is .8 miles end-to-end.
Are you willing to accept questions along the way here?
Yeah.
Were these decisions kind of, was this made in, was there any town input on kind of these suggestions?
Yep. So we sent out a local questionnaire probably about a year ago, maybe two years ago, and we asked questions about, about detour routes, who would be affected in the event of a detour, who should we be contacting, that sort of stuff.
And that went out, I mean, I see some nods, so did it go out electronically? I'm just thinking logically here. This doesn't seem to make any sense. Like, why would you have pedestrians? I mean, this is just one suggestion. Why would they go all the way to Gage?
Yep, that's a good question. So this is what was deemed appropriate by our ped people because there are, there are no sidewalks on part of Coolidge Ave. This is a pedestrian detour that has, that has crosswalks at the intersections. It just has more pedestrian facilities and sidewalks along the entire length. Obviously, pedestrians aren't going to be limited from Coolidge Ave. They could take Coolidge Ave if they wanted to. Just an official, official sign detour route would have to have, would have to be ADA compliant, that sort of, that sort of thing, so.
At what point did you involve the municipality in this?
So we sent the local question, at what point would we, or what point did we?
Did you involve the municipality? In other words, the select board in?
Yep, so I'd have to look back to what date that was sent out, but it would have been the last, you know, in the last year or so.
Yeah, some time ago. I mean, I'm seeing this for the first time, just as you are.
Okay. I have a lot of questions.
This feels like a surprise.
So what, so I'm just going to call applause here for a second, and I'm going to say, Laura is not the enemy. Laura's our friend.
We need a deep breath.
Okay? We are glad that you are here, and we're glad that you are helping us with this problem. And we, we may be a little prickly because we, we didn't have time to get used to this, but it's not you. We're just, we're just getting our heads wrapped around it. So I would ask the board to just remember, we have lots of questions. We're going to have plenty of opportunities to hear this again. Our town manager hasn't heard this. She, she has to give this presentation. We should learn what we can, and we're not here to indict you, okay? We're here to learn from you. And, and we look forward to having you come back, and we'll, we'll give you lots of questions when you do, so.
So I would like to say, we're not in the business of forcing closures upon towns. If a closure isn't appropriate for a town, we're not going to close a road. Really, because of the site constraints, we can't put a temporary bridge in here. And so the other option is phasing, which does get pretty costly because things have to be done multiple times. You have to have the concrete truck out to pour the deck three times instead of one. So it is just something to take, for the town to take into consideration. Also, that 50% reduction in local funds is pretty enticing.
Another question. So we folks have a community questionnaire?
Zero.
But somebody answered a question.
Wasn't anybody on this board?
Well, it might have been, and we don't remember. Do you know?
I think we'd remember this.
I'd say we remember this.
Yeah. I think I definitely remember.
I don't know, I mean, staff saw a questionnaire. I don't know who else they sent it to.
Okay. I'm also wondering, knowing the bridges around here, if this is the worst bridge? This, this bridge has been on the list for repair for a long time, right Dan? This is, this has been one that we've been.
If RJ were here, he'd be saying, we got to repair this. It's about to fall.
The only bridge he brought up last time was the one going into Brooklyn. We've been talking about.
It's been on the list to be repaired for a long time. I'm waiting for the party to decide whether or not it needs to be repaired.
I'm excited for the price tag part.
So I. If you don't do the detour, it'll last as long as the Henry Bridge, which was almost two years.
So.
I do have the responses to the local questionnaire. I can bring them up after the presentation if you have any interest in that, or I can just send them to you afterwards.
How many responses?
It's, so we feel, we send it out to the town, and we ask the town to fill it out with the RPC.
How many responses?
So it's just one, it's one response. It should have been, you know, I don't know if it was the town administrator who filled it out or who it was, but it's just, it's, it's one questionnaire that we send to, to the select board.
Okay. Thank you. Please continue.
So phased construction, option one, we would maintain two ways of traffic. The bridge would be closed to pedestrians, and there would be the off-site pedestrian detour. This is what the layout would look like. So we would shift traffic over onto the sidewalk here and maintain two ways of traffic while we replace this side of the bridge. Phase two, we would shift traffic over to that newly constructed section while constructing this half. So option two for phased construction is maintain pedestrians and one way of traffic and have an, have an off-site detour for westbound traffic. This would be, we would maintain pedestrians on this side of the road and cars on this side of the road while constructing this side of the bridge, and then shift them over to this side while constructing this side of the bridge. Our recommended scope and the matrix with the price tags is the next slide. But our recommended scope is a full bridge replacement with traffic maintained on an off-site detour. We would propose a 60-day closure with the detour signed by the state. Again, the 12-8 typical, span length of approximately 50 feet. None of the options meet the hydraulic standard, although it would be slightly improved. Historic railing would be chosen by the town. We would want to construct this for 100-year design life. Most of our bridges that we construct are to a 75-year design life, but because of the high traffic volumes, because of the national highway system, we would recommend 100 years. Right-of-way would be needed, an aerial utility relocation would be needed, and a municipal/ buried utility relocation would be needed. So here's the alternatives matrix. I'll point you to this line here. So here's the town share for all of those options. So a superstructure repair would have a town share of 30,000. Superstructure replacement, if you close the road, about 40,000. If you use phased construction, 120,000. And then a full bridge replacement would be about 150,000. So all of these would take approximately four years for project development duration. We expect to see this in about 2023. Construction duration of two months for the superstructure repair, three months for superstructure replacement with an off-site detour versus a full construction season if you phase, or six months for the full bridge replacement. Superstructure replacement would have a closure of 30 days versus the 60 days for full bridge. And again, when you look at the annualized costs, this is the lowest option because you're looking at a 15-year project or a 30-year project versus an 100-year bridge. What would be the maximum acceptable length of closure for Bridge 6?
Do you, do you have an idea about what time of year that matters a lot?
Yep. So I understand you guys have a Bennington Battle Day Parade. So we do have in-stream, it was on the community questionnaire that we received. So we do have in-stream work guidelines, so we can't get into the stream until, what is the date?
Uh, June.
June 1st. So we could start this, the closure, June 1st and have this open up by the first week in August. Yep.
I would also consider the economic impact of businesses down there. I mean, it's, it's a, I mean, I know we just went to the parade side of it. God bless the parade, it's wonderful. But the economic impact of a community that's already, the downtown got hit hard last, you're going to have some strong opinions on this. Downtown got hit strong last year with the paving, and I know the goal was to have very open lines of communication, and I think that was attempted, and I think it did, but there was a bad taste on when that happened, during the time of day and the time of year. So, I mean, it's out of ways on this project, but the fact we're kind of coming into it cold, and I know we're supposed to stand down, but this, you're going to get a big audience at the next meeting.
next meeting for this. Business owners and all those pieces. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't jump to the parade on this one. I would jump to the economic impact for our immediate downtown.
Yep.
And are you gonna do anything to ameliorate the loss business?
There's no direct compensation for business loss?
Do you wanna come up here?
So it's a, this is a town roof, so this is your bridge. So ultimately, it's your decision. But as far as other projects in the past, we've had folks that have businesses like right on the corner of the bridge where we physically obstruct their entrances and those folks would be compensated because we've prevented business to their, to their front door.
So you're talking about the mobile station?
No. I think we're talking about, we're talking about Miller's Toll. You wouldn't be able to, and possibly suffered in.
Right.
Which is owned by the same people.
If there's, if there's somebody directly involved with the project. But as far as like businesses along the route, there was no direct compensation for that. The idea with accelerated bridge is that it's, you know, big impacts but short duration. Rather than having that construction, that phased construction there for possibly multiple years, you know, now we can do this in a matter of days. And this is a starting point. Again, this is very early in the process. So we're at 60 days now. As we develop the details, because we've got, like you said before, all the overhead utilities, the underground utilities, we'd have worked closely with, I believe, do you have a local public works person hired in the town? Okay, so we work with them because there's water and sewer line on the bridge. So there's a lot of work to be done, so this is just kind of step one.
We know, big impact for sure. You know, 98,000 trips a day, or no, 9,800 trips a day is a tremendous amount of people using that bridge and we appreciate big impact and we want short duration, so we will work with you to get as much of that as we can.
Can I ask just a couple of questions? So if we went for the full replacement, is keeping the two lanes open and detouring pedestrian traffic still an option? It wasn't clear in the price matrix that you had.
Did you say that again?
So if we do the full replacement, can we still keep two lanes of traffic open? Is that...
That's really true.
Okay, so that may not be an option then?
It might not be an option.
It was option one in them. I mean, I guess my personal opinion would be, don't do it during foliage, but whatever you do, keep both lanes of traffic open. I mean, and then I look at Stu and say, are the cost savings enough that we can then put in a sidewalk on that, on the bypass that doesn't have a sidewalk? So we wouldn't use it to shorten that to, you know?
That's, I was thinking that too. Let's not go, good thoughts, Bill. Let's not go right into problem solving now. I mean, I think we need to, at some level, get through this overview first.
Yeah, let's go, let's go get to the end and then we can certainly answer questions.
Okay.
What time of year would be the most acceptable for Bridge Six to be closed? May to June, June to July, July to August, August to September, during summer break? Some towns are concerned about school bus schedules or other. So this would really be a question. It would be great to have the business.
I'm not touching the clicker on this one, yeah.
Yeah, it feels inappropriate to be responding to this when the businesses most affected are not represented here. You say, I...
It's okay, they're just looking for an overview.
Yeah, I mean, what do I know? You know?
It's just to be fine right now. I don't think she's gonna hold us to these.
No, we're not holding you. This was just to gauge, see how people are feeling.
Just to involve, yeah.
Yep. So preliminary project schedule, we do have this in the budget for construction in 2023, so there's a few years to figure things out. Total cost estimate for what we've proposed is around $3 million with a town share of about 160,000. Which design aspect is most important to you? The shoulder width, bicycle accommodations, bridge railing, construction year, construction duration, cost, or other?
Pick one?
Only pick one. And what would you be most concerned about? Construction delays on Vermont Route 9, detour distance, duration of detour, bridge aesthetics, business impacts, environmental impacts, recreational impacts, other or not really concerned? Did you find this presentation to be too technical, too simplified, just about right, or not much use at all? You can be honest, it's anonymous.
It's anonymous. If you pick D though, you're gonna explain.
And this is the last clicker question. Do you find the recommended scope of work satisfactory? So that means a closure and a full bridge replacement. So this looks like it's, you know, kind of skewed 60/40. So a list of next steps. Generally, we would wait for the town to respond on how they would like to proceed with the project. It sounds like we might be back here for an additional presentation.
Oh, yeah.
Before you give us some direction. After that, we would develop conceptual plans, distribute for comment, request an additional public informational meeting, process local agreements, and go into the right-of-way process if needed. I do have questions and comments here, but I do have some slides in the back here that I'd like to go to. Which alternative do you have the strongest support for? Because I just wanna get an idea. Minor rehab, superstructure replacement, or full bridge replacement?
What were the timeframes for each?
Timeframes, you mean in construction?
To complete these...
They would all be, they would all be in 2023.
No, I mean in lifetime to complete, minor rehabilitation, superstructure replacement, full...
So minor rehab, we would keep, we would keep the road open to traffic and it would be about two months of work. There would be some delays. Superstructure replacement, we would recommend a 30-day closure or the phased construction. Phased construction would be an entire construction season and the full bridge replacement would be a 60-day closure.
So we're not making any commitments here, but there's a lot of cost analysis that we will do as we get into this.
And traffic. Knowing about the 50% reduction in town share, does, do people like a bridge closure better or phased construction?
Correct, in the back. Yes, we have a lot of analysis to do on this, yeah. Fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty. So I'll go back to the questions page. This website is where this presentation will be up tomorrow. All future plans of middles would be up here. Questions, comments?
Can it be on our website?
We could probably add it to our website. It depends, it's their presentation. We have a town link.
I'm just thinking, if the banner reports on this, which they should...
We could probably do a link to it.
Okay, yeah, we should have some way to get to it.
So Laura, I'd like to just start by saying, notwithstanding our surprise and possible sticker shock and everything else, this is a very nice presentation. It's very well done, lot of good information. If we were up to speed on this, this is the kind of presentation we love seeing. So thank you for doing a good job with it. And we have a ton of questions. We, you know we have a ton of questions. Tonight's probably not the night to go into it, knowing that we have a lot more work to come. So if, with this board's permission, unless there's something you really need to know from us tonight, I would be inclined to take one citizen's comment or citizen's comment and then, and then thank you for your time and we'll have town staff get back to you.
Sure.
Okay, so we'll, if there are citizen comments, people that would like to speak, I would welcome that at this point.
Yep.
Laura, I'd ask you if you'd please repeat the question so the people on watching TV can understand what she asked.
Yeah, so it was asked if the costs shown reflect costs for inflation, so the costs in 2023. And we do add contingencies into our costs. We do try to, try to inflate them, so we don't tell the town it's gonna cost you 150,000 and have it cost 300,000. That being said, the costs of steel can fluctuate significantly, the cost of precast can fluctuate significantly, and that's something that's really hard to account for.
Okay. Jackie, go ahead, yeah. Please, if you'd speak to the mic, please, that'd be great. Jackie, sorry, yeah, thank you.
No federal funds?
Yep, so there are federal funds. So town highway bridge projects are generally 80% federal funds, 10% state funds, and 10% local funds. And so when the town's share goes down to 5%, that means the state share, we pick up, we pick up the excess, so it becomes a 15% state fund. So it is 80% federally funded, yep.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Can I just, am I right in assuming that it's the town's responsibility to notify business owners that would be impacted of where we are in the process and to get their feedback? That would be our responsibility, not yours?
Yep, because it's a town highway bridge project. And I would work with the RPC and they might have some additional outreach methods.
Okay.
I think it's an important point that you made earlier, that this is our bridge, you know, so you are helping us do some work that we need done and we're thankful for that.
Could I just ask one question for next time? I'd just like to find out if doing the 100% replacement can be done and keep the lanes open, even if it takes a lot longer? I don't know if it is or not, but I would like to know that.
So it's not something that we even costed out. It's not something that we would recommend doing. I think it would be an extremely difficult project and it would likely go into multiple construction years. It would also be quite expensive.
Okay.
If that's something that the town's interested in pursuing.
That's just me right now.
Are there other questions from the audience, from the general public? So we have a lot of questions, but I'd say let's let the staff chew on this foil, come back with a presentation that we can manage. And Stuart, do you have any last word that you wanna say on this before we...
Well, I, once again, I apologize, Laura, for not having you on the agenda. I have to say, I'm equally surprised as the board is as to the level of work that's going into this and I don't know that any of us and my staff have even seen these costs or any of these options until tonight. So if I had a critique, I, it would have been great if we had some of this information ahead of time so that we could prepare the board and others.
Yeah, I will say, when I, when I reached out to you originally to schedule the meeting, I did send us a copy of the scoping report, which has the cost matrix in it. And so that's also up, this website here is on the email correspondence between us and so that does have the, the cost matrix and all of the options really explained in detail.
Well, so listen, not all of our meetings go perfectly smoothly. We're gonna bend like the wise bamboo here and I think we are going to, thank you for the presentation and we're gonna move on to next items and we look forward to having you back in town very soon.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we have some clickers for you. So Stuart, we have agenda item number seven, which is to set the water and sewer rates. Have you got a little something for us on this?
Yes, I prepared a memorandum for you. I think that, you know, when we reviewed the water and sewer fund budgets in that work session, obviously I think that you folks have worked very hard going over the budgets themselves. You recognize the problems that we face with trying to maintain our water and sewer infrastructure while also facing depreciation, cost increases, and bond cost increases, which are the primary reasons that these two budgets are being heavily impacted this year. As you know, the, for years, the select board kept the rates artificially low because they did not budget for depreciation or set aside minimum reserves. So we are, we are in a situation now where the boards have recognized the importance of depreciation and reserves and thanks to Melissa Courier, our finance director, we have been on track to build those issues up. We're probably looking at rate increases in this range for the next three to four years before things start to level off. And with that, I did do a rate, had my staff do a rate comparison. Our water rates are somewhat higher than most that we could get our hands on relatively quickly. But when you combine the two, we're down in the bottom half of the rates. And we looked at Bennington, Brattleboro, Manchester, Montpelier, North Bennington, Rutland City, and Waterbury. But please note that other communities don't charge the same rate for commercial and residential. They have add-on costs for the size of the line for whether or not you have sprinklers. So even though their rates might look low, they may end up being ultimately the same or higher than ours. And with that, I would recommend, or ask for board support to set the water and sewer rates for FY '20. Flat rate in the water at 146.96, I better get my glasses out, 145.95, I was close. The per gallon fee at $5.41 per thousand, which is a half a penny per gallon. And we do have a meter surcharge of 87.73 on the sewer side. A flat rate would be 109.68, $3.81 per thousand with a meter surcharge of 68.16. And in both cases, that would generate slightly less than what we need to operate and we are covering the deficit in the rate, raising the rates with a fund balance in the sewer system to mitigate these large increases. The sewer rate increase is 10 and a half percent. The water rate increase is 7 and a half percent.
Thank you, Stuart. As this board knows, we went through the budget in excruciating detail last week and we went through it line by line and we had the benefit of having your staff here to really press them hard on whether there was any way we could do anything about this. And we ended up deciding that these, at that point, we'll see how this vote goes, but that these rates were warranted and furthermore that we need to do this because we need to not be kicking cans down the road and putting stuff on the credit card. We need to be making sure that we are taking care of business in a way that was not always done in the past. And so I, before we move into general discussion, I would say that this, this water and sewer rate comparison is very handy and if, if people would like to take the time to look at it, I think it's probably worthwhile. The, if you use the proposed rates that the town has proposed we use, in other words, the new rates, and you compare them to the 2018, 19 rates that other towns have provided, Brattleboro would have a combined water and sewer charge that's 19 and a half percent higher than Bennington's. Montpelier would have a combined water and sewer charge that's 93% higher than Bennington's. Rutland City would have a water and sewer combined rate that's 32% higher than Bennington's. So only Waterbury and Manchester would have slightly lower rates and those towns, both, these numbers are artificially low because they socket to the businesses and... these numbers are artificially low because they socket to the businesses, and they charge a higher rate to the commercial users and the people that have sprinkler systems, which we don't do. So we are still, again, water's different from sewer, but if you combine them and you combine the efficiencies, we are still very, looking very good compared to other municipalities. So I say that not because I'm happy about these rate increases, but because I am happy to know that we still are maintaining a frugal stance in the, at least compared to our neighbors around the state. So before we start this, any further conversation would, should we put a motion on the table?
Are you doing these together or separately?
We, that's right. You need to recuse on the water.
Correct.
Okay, so we'll do them separately. Would somebody like to make a motion for the purposes of discussion on the water rate change?
A move that we set the rate for the water to be, what is the rate exactly?
Say as proposed.
As proposed.
As proposed. Okay. Do I have a second on that?
There is, okay.
I'll second. Okay, thank you, Chad. Discussion, is there any discussion about this besides my monologuing?
I don't have anything to, I guess I wouldn't really call it a discussion. I just wanted to make sure the public knew that we weren't happy about it, and we, there is work being done to reduce the cost of electricity. They're working with Efficiency Vermont, and we could see a decrease in the use of electricity at some point in the future that, you know, we didn't just look at it, and it was not a status quo. We really did push back on that specific line item to see if we could make a improvement there.
Other comments from the board? Comments from the citizens? I need somebody to come to the mic or to, Mary, I know it's hard for you, why don't you start? Jackie and Mary, come on up if you can. Yes, please. Yeah, certainly.
I'm going to refer you to an article from Bennington Banner, and the date of it is, oh gee, when we passed the water bill, $6 million bond approved for water waste treatment plant. I don't know if this is just water or waste.
Right now, we're talking about water, but we will be talking about sewer momentarily, and I'm not going to make you sit back down, so go ahead and make a comment.
All right, so I don't know why the water is increasing because in this article, it just talks about the sewer rate. And in, in the article, it says, "The $6 million bond principal only for the first two or three years will begin to be paid back by the town after substantial or final completion of the project." This completion is expected to be completed December of 2020. At that time, the quarterly flat sewer rate is expected to increase by approximately $38. It doesn't say per year or per quarter. This increase from 95, so I guess it's from quarterly, fiscal 2018 rate to approximately 133. Annual cost to the ratepayer would increase from 38, excuse me, 382 to 533. That's just for the sewer. Okay? It says nothing about the water. And then it says heard, sorry, Stu, it just says heard, says the taxpayer increase depends heavily on the amount of money the town can set aside. And then, then he goes on to say that he's contributing to the Vermont Food Bank. I don't know why that had to be in the article, but...
Well, we can't speak to the banner, but, but I can tell you that, well, why don't you let Stuart take it? I mean, they're two different things here. Let's do water first.
Yeah, I don't know why the water is included in the increase since it was just a sewer thing.
Well, I can, I can explain, Jackie. We basically, both funds have bond costs that have been associated with increases and impact on facilities. In the water fund, we, we had a bond of $7 million back in 2004, 2007 to upgrade the water filtration plant. In 2016, we passed another $3 million bond to extend water up to a tank up beyond SVC, which will address pressure problems in the entire higher elevations of the system, Crescent Boulevard and Jefferson Heights. So the, the water fund has taken on $10 million in bond cost in the last decade, and with those improvements come depreciation. If you're, if you're not depreciating and budgeting for depreciation, then you're basically gambling that the system will be able to be repaired when its useful life has diminished. And now we have the $9.85 million bond for the wastewater treatment facility that was passed just a year ago. And, and here again, the water fund is being impacted from a depreciation perspective by the PFOA waterline expansion. And those, that's being paid for by St. Cobain, but we, it's our system, and therefore, we must increase our depreciation to cover the useful life of those additional facilities that we will be maintaining. So we've got two different funds, both impacted by bond costs, both impacted by depreciation costs. Otherwise, our operational expenses have been pretty much held in check, thanks in part to the staff and the good work that they do. But we have to, I think we have to face the fact that we better be preparing for the future. And when we passed the sewer bond, we were looking at a four-year rate increase of 13%, 12%, 11%, and 10%. This year, when we did look at the rates, my finance director was able to forecast a 10 and 1/2% increase out of a four-year period to meet the demands of the finances for the system. So we were able to move that rate increase down from what we were projecting at this time last year, but still, it is substantial.
Okay, so that answers those questions pretty well. What's, what else?
Not really, but I still don't understand it, but when you, you, you compare, or you attempted to compare the rates from other cities that didn't meter, that metered out things, and you compare it to our rates, I don't think that was a fair, I think it's an apple and oranges thing, because you can't compare our rates to Brattleboro when Brattleboro's rates are separated and our rates are not separated.
Well, in fact, our rates are separated, Jackie.
They are separated.
Well, I know, I pay a different rate, but...
You pay them on the same bill, but it's...
But, but you can't say ours are, you know, theirs are 19% higher.
I can, in fact, say that. So here's the, here's the, the rates per thousand gallons.
Well, no, 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 wait, 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 wait. They don't specify for the individual and the commercial rate, okay? So that's why I'm saying it's apples and oranges, because they're, they're, they didn't say, okay, individual homeowners are paying this and commercial properties are paying this. You lumped us all together as one, one unit, commercial and residential. So that's why I said you can't compare us to other cities who don't separate that, who do separate that.
Right, they charge a higher rate for their commercial and for their high use.
Right, and I personally think we should, and I personally would like a meter in my house.
Which would make our rates look even better. So my, my point was that our rates look good compared to other communities, so I, and that, that statement is borne out by the actual...
When I moved here 10 years ago, I was paying $50, $50 a quarter, and now I'm paying 99, and pretty soon I'll be paying 140. That's tripled in 10 years. That's not low.
Well, okay, so I, all I'm saying is the new rate in Bangton would be $5.41 per thousand gallons. The, the rate currently in Montpelier is $8.30 per gallon for the residential rate. So that's, that, I was not trying to necessarily do a full comprehensive review of the data because, as I say, with the increases that go under the commercial and the high use, it would actually make their numbers look worse. Mary?
So Stuart's presentation of the present water projects that we're paying for and why the increases are going forward was very good, but many of you were on the board about a year, year and a half ago when I came before you, several times to ask you as the water board, you as the select board or also the water board, to have a two, five, 10-year plan of how we're going to go forward and how we pay for water projects. At that time, I presented five or six water projects that weren't even some of the ones that were on what you just discussed, Stuart, which we have in the legislature and I see on a regular basis as priority issues. And at that time, the total on those, and I think it did include the filtration, so plants, so I know that's a big price tag, but it was close to $78 million on all the projects that were priorities. I never got one response back from this board on what the future plan is. So it's very, I think, concerning and upsetting to the citizens of this town as this is going up without seeing a future plan as to how we are going to be addressing all of these issues that we face. And someone made the comment, kicking the can down the road. That's, continues to be a little bit of what we're doing. So does anyone want to respond now, a year and a half later?
We did, I did quite a lot of inquiry into this, and...
Well, my question, my question...
I don't know if I get it right or not, Stuart, but the way I understood it was the state asked us to produce a list of projects that might potentially come on some point, not necessarily things that we needed to do right away, but something that could possibly be on the radar at some point in the future so that they would get a sense of what the, what the overall might be. And so that, there's a couple of categories. One is the category of things we have to do something about right now, which are these things that we've bonded for and done. And then there's a category of things that might come along at some point in the future, and that's where the 78 million comes from. Is that right?
That's, that's correct.
Well, they did focus that those were priority issues for Bennington, and again, I think the planning of those going forward, even if it's out 10 years, is important for folks to know that there is some kind of plan in place.
Okay, thank you.
And not this yearly adjustment to the water because that does upset the citizens greatly.
If not, we have a motion on the floor to adjust the water rate, and I would say, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Recused.
Recused, sorry. So we also have a sewer budget, which is, looks even better compared to other communities, but this is a, nevertheless, an increase that we have had to do as a result of bringing our water sewer treatment plant up to snuff. We, we let it go as far as we possibly could. I would say maybe we let it go a little too far before we did the, engaged in this comprehensive and very necessary repair, and we are now improving our sewer, and we are counting depreciation, which is something that should have been happening all along, but we are now doing that. So for the purposes of discussion, I would accept a motion on this sewer.
I'll make a motion that we accept the sewer rates as proposed.
Thank you, Bill. Any second?
Second.
Discussion.
I'd like to comment. I just kind of wanted to answer your question a little bit and some other questions and why I, I think, why I'm going to vote in favor of this and why if it was my own money exclusively, not just a little part of it, I would do exactly the same thing, which is long-term planning. And after asking Melissa 50 questions, which she politely answered, about how we're managing depreciation and how we're really at the, at the, we're hitting really two different storms at one time. No money was put away for a very long period of time, and now there's a bunch of mandated repairs that have to be done because the water filtration plant simply can't continue to operate in the state that it's in without spending the money. So we have that, which is the history catching up with us. But what they're also doing now is depreciating that going forward, which the silver lining to that is there's steep increases for a few years, but then it levelizes. And infrastructure being the massive portion of that, it levelizes, and then costs go up for labor and things like that, which are a much more minor portion, such that when the major cost levelizes, being the depreciation, long-term for decades, the water rates will rise very, very slowly, much below the, below the CPI, and I think that's exactly what I ask you. Can I look at my constituents with a straight face and say we're going to see a sharp increase for four years? Then things are going to levelize and increase at a rate that's below the CPI for a very long period of time. And I think I can say that that's the case. So as far as long-term strategic planning, we're now putting away money so that we can stabilize the water rates. It's just not happening for three or four years. It's happening over the next 20, 30 years. Things will be, be paid for because we're already beginning to now put away money for those repairs that need to happen at the end of a 20-year period of, of the equipment.
Do I have to go to the lifespan of these pipes that are put in?
I think that's not a question for me.
Stuart, why don't you, there, there are many, I'm not sure which pipes you're talking about, but would you just...
When you say depreciation, I mean, to replace things, whether you have to replace it?
Generally, structures, buildings are a 20-year life. Some of the mechanics are perhaps less than that. The mechanicals, pumps and those kinds of things have a slower, a lower life. We find that the infrastructure that is buried in the ground, some of our, our pipes go back to the Henry W. Putnam days, back in the early 1900s. So depending on the, I think, on the subservice material that the pipes are embedded in, the life of those pipes can be anywhere from 20- to 50-year lifespan. So when we look at depreciation, I should say when my finance director looks at depreciation, we're looking at the lifespan of all of those major components. Not, not the big, not all together, but we figure it differently for each of those major components. Buildings versus mechanicals, they might be lumped into different pots because their lifespans are different.
Actually, you said 75 years, correct? You said 75 for all new iron ductile piping and actually some documentation given that is actually different than 100 years, does that work?
Yep. I'm sorry, Melissa, it, people, yeah, thank you.
The past, I'm not sure, five or so years, for all of the new water lines that use the iron ductile piping, I depreciate over 75 years, but the documentation, I've seen some that says up to 100 years, but the more conservative person that I am, I, I keep it at 75. So it's much, for all the new water lines, it's, it's quite a bit larger than...
Yeah, thank you, Melissa. Other questions from the board? Other thoughts, concerns? If not, I guess I'm going to call the question. All in favor of changing the sewer rate as recommended by the town staff, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And no abstentions or... So we are moving on with that. Thank you, Stuart, for the hard work you've done on that, and thank you for pulling this extra information together, which was very reassuring to me, anyway. So we will now move on to the manager's report. Stuart, what have you got for us?
Well, I have no action items for you tonight. On the, on the PFOA-related work, three contracts, and when I wrote this, the contract, contracts had been opened, or the bids had been opened. The contracts have now been awarded, as you see here, and that just happened yesterday. So the first three contracts have been awarded. There are two additional contracts that are out to bid. These contracts cover Route 7, Houghton Lane, and Apple Hill. So those projects will probably be starting relatively soon. The two remaining contracts will deal with the East Road expansion and the Chapel Road expansion. So those are out to bid and should be coming in soon. As this board has asked or made a decision to do, the wastewater treatment plant, it continues along. The level of activities continues to be very high, and we have postponed the solar roof project until completion of the project. Morgan Spring, the purchase, which was scheduled to take place on June 21, has been postponed. We found some additional environmental... We found some additional environmental concerns that the owner is attempting to deal with. And I have a meeting scheduled with the new owners of, they're called Premium Waters, will be coming into town. No, actually, I'll be going to Pittsfield to meet with them early next week to talk about their participation in the project. They are very interested, and we'll see what we can find in that regard. The sewer discharge was covered in the banner today, the E. coli. It is not, not an issue at the present time. We have resolved the problem and will continue to chlorinate at a higher rate to ensure that that doesn't happen again. As you know, St. Albans has decided to join the opioid lawsuit. They are actually filing in federal court, not state court, as was presented to us. I did briefly, have a brief exchange with the town manager in St. Albans, Dominic Cloud. They basically felt that they should throw their hat in the ring, essentially is what he said. I haven't had a chance to get together with him to talk about the forecast for staff effort, which was one of our concerns, that when you take on Big Pharma, are you going to be buried with discovery and spend a lot of staff time trying to dig out and provide those answers? So we have more to find out there, and I'll be back to you with all of that. And then the last, but certainly not least, the Deeper Street Garage has sold. We have new owners, and they hope to begin construction, I think, within the next couple of weeks. Is that right, Dan? Very soon.
And that's all I have. It's great. Big, beautiful building, back in the tax rolls. It's going to be great. So we are going to just talk very briefly about the agenda for our next meeting. This would be July 8, and there's a little bit of uncertainty about that as far as our senior services topic. I don't know if, let's see, Shannon's not here right now. Did you have a chance to reach out to Shannon on that?
I did ask her to contact those folks. I don't know whether she's done it or not.
Okay, she has? Okay, so we'll be having a conversation on senior services in Bennington. And that is, that is the main plan for next, next meeting. July is also the last opportunity to set the tax rate for general highway fund and fire fund, and the last opportunity to hear and accept the BBC work plans at the AD tax rate, which is done. So Stuart, anything else that we need to be thinking about for July?
I don't have anything right now in my file. I hope I don't get surprised by some other state agency walking in with a major project discussion.
Okay. Jeanne, are you not at that meeting?
No, I am at that one, the 22nd.
Okay, okay. With summer schedules, if people are taking vacations, it would be helpful for me to know, just to make sure that we can continue to make quorum.
Jeanne, did you just say you're out the 22nd?
Twenty-second.
I am too.
Okay, so we will still barely have a quorum, but if anybody else is not going to be here on the 22nd, please let me know. Okay, so other business, it is, we would be grossly remiss if we didn't just take a deep breath and all just say how great it is that the Bennington Redevelopment Group has finally closed on the Putnam Block, right?
Yes.
Fifty-six million dollar project, twenty different lenders. The Bennington Redevelopment Group really deserves our thank and admiration for getting this done. I'd like to call out Bill Colvin for just being an exceptional ringleader and practically pulling a miracle together. Certainly a very big rabbit out of the hat. We have a lot of other good things coming up. I won't go into them. Community picnic on Friday, I think, Pride Parade on Saturday, and a number of other things, but I'll let other people speak. Let's see. Bill, you, do you have anything that you'd like to say is other business?
I don't have anything other than just to thank Carson for being here. It's been a pleasure the short time I got to work with you, so.
Thank you. I have nothing, just the same thing, echo Bill's comments. Thank you, Carson. It's been a pleasure. Enjoyed hanging out with you during Election Day and getting to know you in the cold and glad to see you go.
Speechless.
Same here, Carson. We'll very much miss you. Thank you for your service.
Yeah, Donald and I were just lamenting your departure a week or so ago at Madison's over non-alcoholic beer. Kidding, no, it's good beer. Anyhow, what I said is that, you know, the way that you've handled yourself here, especially when it was something controversial, is that there were, you had teeth in the remarks and questions that you made, but you didn't leave any bite marks. And I thank you for your service.
I just want to take a minute to, you know, Bruce, it's nice that you're doing this and stepping up, so appreciate it.
Jean?
I'm going to miss having you next to me. Is this where Bruce is going to be?
We'll see, we might shake things up a little bit, you know, who knows?
Forgive me if I call you by the wrong name for a little while.
Colin Carson. All right, well, thank you very much. And Carson, I echo what the board has said. It has been a particular pleasure serving with you. And I personally am going to miss you very much on this board, but we will carry on. And so we have a need to go into executive session on a personnel matter. May I have a motion to go into executive session on a personnel matter, please?
We'll move.
Second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Before you go in, I think there's a couple of things that need to get aired out.
I just want, I just noticed on the warrants that Hayden, the project at the police department, is it complete? I was just curious.
Frankly, I haven't talked with Larry McCloud about the project. We are getting very close. I know that they would, they had some initial asbestos issues they had to deal with early on, but I think it's been moving along pretty well.
Great, yeah. Oh, and any movement on the Elm Street Depot?
Replanting?
Replanting.
We have a plan in place. I sent out a notice to the directly impacted property owners. We are contracting with Pembroke Landscaping. Ron has suggested using the plan as a basis, meeting with the individual property owners to help site the plantings that we have proposed.
So that's the next step, is meeting with the neighbors?
He'll have his plants with him.
Oh, cool, okay, that's it.
I apologize, Jeanne, I thought you had finished with other business.
Well, I don't know where to put that. It's almost part of the manager's report rather than other business.
Okay, okay, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor to go into executive session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll go into executive session in five minutes.